...the mayor to enter into and execute a license, and that's typing, a license agreement with the State Department of Transportation in connection with the South End Connector project. I just wanted to see if anybody had any questions on this. I mean, we've discussed the South End Connector project. I think everyone is familiar with it. This has no change on the project itself. It's just because it involves some state land.
No.
We need to enter this basic agreement for us to be able to use a portion of state property for purposes of the project.
Mr. Kelly?
Is there, are there any questions that people have on that? And I believe, Mr. Johnson, this is in your ward, so you would be carrying the resolution?
It's under the city one.
Under resolution, it's under resolutions introduced in 3.12.19R. As I say, it makes no changes to the project or anything. It just lets us use some state property that's involved with it. Probably for a nominal amount. Like, we probably have to pay $1, which they'll leave.
Yeah, when we're running this route on the highway, it's dropped beyond by Department of Transportation. So we can't put any sort of infrastructure although we already maintain that area. We need a new occupancy permit for the Department of Transportation. So this resolution is part of applying to that.
Okay. Any question?
So if I could just give people maybe a little bit more background, because there's a lot of new members. So there's the rail trail that comes down to South Pearl. And people have been frustrated that you can, you know, enjoy recreation and come down to there, and then there's no place to go from there. And so there's, Greg, do you know the length? It's maybe a mile and a quarter, something like that?
About two miles.
Yeah. So that's about a mile and a half. Right. And so to get from there to the Quine Preserve is the goal, so that, so that there's this connection, so that people can then continue to go enjoy themselves there, maybe come to the downtown area, et cetera. So it goes, it goes along to South Pearl for a little while, and then it goes into here, where the fort is, and then on the other side of 787, in parts of it, actually, I think under 787.
Yes.
So that's one of the reasons why there's state land involved. And the goal is that people can walk, or run, bicycle from the rail trail to the Quine Preserve and have a safe path. And we've been designing it. We passed at least one bond ordinance.
Yeah, I can't do the dollar rough at the top of my head, but it's over $1 million, so we have to be safe.
Plus, we've gotten significant state money for it, as well as bonding, and there might be some federal things.
Yeah, and it's all through planning and design, and we're working towards construction as part of that project.
So this will be passed for Monday?
Thursday.
I'm sorry, Thursday. That reminds me, Michelle, we've got to change the cover on the agenda.
Okay.
Okay, so if no one had any questions, I'll let Brad go.
Thank you, Brad.
So then we'll come back to the agenda again in a little bit. In the meantime, we convened early and invited Chief Hawkins here, who is here. So I think members had some questions, I guess regarding the Alie Dar Williams issue and shooting. And I don't know if I just want to let those members who had some questions go ahead.
Well, I'll start off. Part of the last community meeting that we had before the decision was made not to file charges, it was questions proposed through Alice Green as far as the internal investigation. And we were wondering if we were going to get a response to that. And I'm pretty sure that next Tuesday, when you come to the neighborhood meeting, you're going to be asked that question repeatedly. So we were looking for, because there was some things that were said in the press conference that he made, moved towards, you know, it was a couple of things that were said that didn't display itself in the video. And it was some questions that were left even after the police did their investigation. And like I said, they were just wondering if they were going to get a response and when to the questions that were presented by Dr. Green.
All right, and thank you. And first of all, thanks, counsel, for inviting me here this evening. You know, it's one of those incidents that raises a lot of questions in the community, and I look forward to having this discussion tonight. I think, I need to start off, though, by just making just a very basic statement that, of course, you know, this whole incident has resulted in civil litigation, and so therefore there's only so much I can say about the case itself and about the specifics of the case. But I tell you this, to put this in context, I think it's important for counsel to know that when I came here, you know, September 5th, I believe is what it was, this case, the internal investigation was complete. You know, all of the recommendations and conclusions and everything, you know, the Internal Office of Professional Standards that conducted the full investigation, and everything was done. It was complete. And so me as a new chief, my responsibility when I came in that day, and in fact, the day, the day after I started was the day of the press conference that you're responding, that you're referring to. And so the day of that press conference, I had less than 24 hours to review this entire case. I had heard about it. I had read about it from Michigan. You know, I'd seen the press clippings and all that, but I had not personally talked to anybody about this case until I came, I believe it was the Wednesday, that I arrived here. And so that evening, I had a chance to look at the case, looked at it, and then the morning of the press conference, I had a chance to look at it again. And so as a new chief, my obligation at that point was to, number one, just take a look at the case and make a determination as to whether or not the process had been done correctly. And so, and I think you all may have heard me say that at one of the meetings we had before, was this investigation procedurally correct? And so I needed to make a determination as to, best practices as I knew them, was the case, was the process done correctly? In other words, was the, was the evidence preserved and collected appropriately? Were witnesses investigated? Was there some reports, internal reports, that were generated? And was there a plan to do two things? Conduct an internal investigation to determine whether or not there were violations of policies and procedures? And number two, was there a plan after that to have this entire case presented to the district attorney to determine whether or not the actions of that officer constituted a crime? And so I wasn't necessarily coming, at that point in time, making any value judgments about what this officer did, because I just didn't have enough information, I didn't have enough time, I didn't have the institutional knowledge at that time to make that sort of value judgment. And so I left the value judgment piece to those who had been here well before me, to the acting chief who had been here, and all the other folks who had investigated this incident. And so that was left to them. I only wanted to determine whether or not the process was done correctly. And from my experience, that process itself was sound. They collected evidence, they interviewed the people that were available to be interviewed, they, there was an internal report that was generated, and they had a determination, they had a conclusion as to whether or not the officer violated internal policies and procedures. And then the case itself was presented, and all of the evidence that was collected, all of the reports, all of the video, everything that the Office of Professional Standards had available to them, all of that information was presented to the district attorney to determine whether or not this incident should result in criminal charges. And so that's, that's, just to give you context, that was my involvement in this whole incident. And I understand that there's some questions and concerns about some aspects of the internal investigation, and whether or not, you know, things matched what video showed and things like that, and I understand that piece of it. It's inappropriate for me to comment on that piece right now, you know, for a number of reasons, you know, and I'm sure if you guys, we've got the city, the corporate counsel here to weigh in on that piece of it as well, but, so councilman, you know, like I said, I'm very limited on what I can say regarding any type of personal evaluation, personal assessment of this case.
And I hear you, and I understand that part, but, you know, something that you're going to hear is a statement that you made at the Public Safety Committee meeting about it being procedurally sound. And that's where the question, you know, like, with the decisions that's been made, you can't go back on that in terms of, you know, what the DA chose and what he didn't choose. But, you know, in terms of hearing from the community about, you know, when me and you met one-on-one, I shared my personal view about, you know, how I felt about it, and we don't need to rehash that. And so, you know, just didn't want you walking into, you know, like, first of all, it was a question asked to me because the community wanted to know. Were they going to ever hear answers to the questions that they had? And like I said, on Tuesday, you'll probably hear about it from the people that's going to be present.
I probably should have done a better job of explaining what I meant by procedurally sound, because I've been to a couple of meetings after that, and that, that phrase caused some, some questions and some concerns from some residents and some people who have been observed in this case. And so I just want to make it very clear, and I've said it before, and when I come to the meeting, I think sometime next week, you know, I'm going to explain what I meant by that phrase, is that the process itself, not the, not the conclusion, not the value judgments about what this officer did, whether it was right or wrong, but the process, was that process appropriate? Was it within best practices in contemporary law enforcement, as I know it? And in my opinion, the process itself, how it was investigated, how the evidence was collected, how the people were interviewed, where the case went after the internal investigation, that whole process itself, in my opinion, that process was correct. I understand that there's questions about some aspects of the investigation in the conclusion, though.
Yeah, and I think, like, there would be a bunch of them, and just being respectful to the process, trying not to, you know, just, it wouldn't make any sense to just keep on saying the same thing over and over.
Right.
So, you know, the fact that it's a lawsuit pending kind of handcuffs, you know, how that, you know, your ability to respond.
Yeah.
And at least I have something to bring back to say that we had this conversation. And, you know, and they kind of pretty much knew that that was going to be the response. So, thank you.
All right, thank you.
I got a thought on you. If that's going to happen on Tuesday, what's the point of having the event Tuesday?
I mean, but that wasn't, like, I don't think, I don't think that, like, so, I don't think that it's, people are coming in there to yell and scream. I think that it was a professional question held at a professional meeting, and it was, you know, like, it wasn't, actually, it was some people from a matching neighborhood, you know, so I don't think they're coming to yell and scream. I think that, you know, people feel strongly about what they saw, what they read, and, you know, what happened. And, you know, people have questions. And so if they're asking me questions that I didn't know how to answer because it was my first time around, I brought it to the last caucus and asked the question, like, yo, what do we do when the community is asking questions of this process? And it was suggested that we call the chief in and present it to him.
But there's a meeting this Tuesday, right?
But it was a meeting this Tuesday was set up.
Oh, it already happened.
No, it's a meeting.
No, it's coming next Tuesday.
Next Tuesday.
Yeah, it's my point, so we can get out of it if you can't speak much.
I don't, but that, she's not bringing, like, the person who is calling that meeting is separate from this conversation. But the fact that he's going to be at the meeting, you know, community members are going to come to the community meeting.
But are they aware he's not going to be able to say much? That's my question.
I'm pretty sure.
I'm asking, are they aware it's just going to be, they're not going to say much?
That is a very good point.
It's, I mean, that's.
But I do think, I think there's a value in having tough conversations when you don't agree, and when, even when you can't, you know, go into certain details.
Oh, I agree.
You know, the fact that you go to the meeting, you show face, you answer the questions, you answer about what steps are being done to address issues going forward.
That's fine.
You know, the worst thing I think you could do is not show up to the meetings, because then all you're going to hear is, you know, you're avoiding, you're avoiding, you know, you know. And to be honest, I kind of think sometimes people, especially in today's world, don't go into enough meetings for people you don't agree with. And don't go into enough meetings where you're going to have a little bit of back and forth. We're open minded. So, you know, I know you have a meeting with Neighborhood Association of Mind on Thursday, but I'll be there. So I think that's the right step.
But part of our job is to manage constituents' expectations. That's what Jack is saying. You cannot, I would not want to put people in a position where you know they can't answer questions, and people expecting them to answer questions. Part of your job, if you're a leader, is to tell people, because there's a lawsuit, your questions aren't going to get answered. If you want to talk about other things and other issues, that's fine, but because there is a lawsuit, anything he says in public can be used in a lawsuit. He can't comment on it. I know, I know how people feel, and I know what they want. I get it. And it's not, and it's not, he's not using it as a crutch, he's not using it as a barrier. It's the law.
And I get that.
His fiduciary responsibility, as fiduciary responsibility, as is ours, is to the city of all. So we can't do anything or put ourselves in any position that would hurt the city of Albany financially. So his words that he uses could be used against or for in this lawsuit. So what I'm saying is, and I think this is what Jack is getting at, is to manage the expectations of the people coming into that meeting. So like Derek, you said yourself, people aren't going to want to hear him say, well, it's a litigation. Well, then it's our job to manage that expectation. They might not want to hear it, but it's the truth.
Now, we can manage it.
And that it's not about a back and forth, it's about, this is what you should expect coming to this meeting.
And we can manage it, and we can also manage it before the conversation starts. You can make a statement that's limited to what can be said because it's an active lawsuit.
Yes.
But it's, if you want to start the healing process, and you want to start the process to start moving forward with the community, you've got to be there, and you've got to be willing to, to take tough questions, and you have to be willing to start looking at what actions are going to be taken to move forward.
Well, I think the healing process starts when the questions to the communities can be answered, and at this time, it can't be.
So I, I want to say, I want to say that I understand that there's a lawsuit. I don't know that that means he can't say anything. I understand he's listening to corporation counsel on this, and the city is going to take, you know, a certain position potentially on this, but I don't know if that's necessarily the wise thing to do, because sometimes you get a jury that then is rather upset with the circumstances and the fact that there's essentially no willingness to talk about what happened, what the truth is, what the inconsistencies are, and, you know, and there are some inconsistencies here in this arrest report that I think are irreconcilable with the video that I have seen, specifically walking in the.
Well, isn't this what's going to happen in court? The lawyer's going to ask him that?
Right, but Judy's free to express the problems that she sees, I would think, and I don't think it's any harm in hearing them.
Oh, no, it's fine. He can't answer.
And I, and I don't, so I don't necessarily know that you wind up with a lesser award because you aren't dealing with the situation. I don't know that it's in the best interest of our community for us not to be dealing with the situation openly at this particular point in time. And I'm also nervous about, about the potential for there being more incidents like this. And because we're not talking about it, we're not taking the appropriate action to prevent it, to, you know, curse.
Chief Hawkins can't talk about it, doesn't mean that he's not doing what needs to be done within the department, though. And I also think that it's also not on his plate whether he answers these questions or not. That's why we have corporate counsel to play butt for. You know, or not.
Frank, if I could.
Mike, great. And as the attorney for the city of Albany, we've discussed this, and I've advised him that he should not discuss any of the particulars of the case, and that is how we are proceeding. So you can blame me, but it's not in the best interest for the city, and I cannot advise my client, which is the city of Albany, to publicly discuss any of the facts related to the case. It's not in our best interest.
So can I, I've been having my hand up for quite a while.
If I can.
If I can make a comment, first of all, I think the chief is very capable of having thoughts and expressing to the community what the future of the Albany Police Department is with regard to looking at lessons learned, whether he can go into every detail or not. I'm sure there are lessons to be learned and lessons to guide you to address Judy's concern about presenting a future thing like this. Now, my understanding is that the acting chief who oversaw this investigation is no longer with the department, is retired. In fact, my understanding is that the officer himself retired, is no longer with the department. I guess if they're needed for any questioning, I would assume you would pursue that, and they'd be available. I don't, I'm not the one to make that decision. So if I could just finish.
Mike, what do you mean by that? I don't know. What do you mean?
Oh, my understanding is that Detective Olson retired, and chief, acting chief Bezos retired. If they're needed, I'm sure you know how to get a hold of them.
Oh, you don't.
And I'm not going to make any suggestions, directives, whatever.
Oh, yeah.
But it's just my understanding of that, and that's. But I guess my other question is, you said that an internal report was generated, and I suppose at some time that would be made available at the appropriate time, so maybe there's some lessons we could all learn from it.
The internal investigation is my bad.
It's public information.
It was published, the whole thing?
It is public information. It's public information.
Yeah, and I want to make this clear, too. I've directed my staff that everything that is legally permissible to be distributed to the public through foil, that it be released. And so, and I'm assuming that that directive has been complied with. And there's been a number of foil requests for documents and things like that, and all of those requests have been complied with. So everything that's legally permissible to be released has been released.
So, so my impression is, it is a good thing that you are going to Neighborhood Association meetings on Thursday and next Tuesday, because you can put a good face on the department and talk in terms of, you know, what your commitment to standard practices are that would prevent this, and when the time comes, and we can publish whatever specific lessons about what might have been done wrong, we can address that, too, and keep it from happening again. So a self-imposed silence, I think, I can appreciate what Bill is saying, he doesn't want to play his whole hand since there's a pending lawsuit, but a total self-imposed silence in front of the community would not be a good thing, and I have every confidence that you have the ability to go out and talk to him.
Thank you.
So you're meeting this meeting is on Tuesday?
So I think that you had neighborhood meetings set up throughout the city.
Right.
Because I understand you're going to be at Metropolitan as well.
Right, just to clear up, just to clear up.
So it was a coincidence that this stuff happened?
Yes, yeah, these are just Neighborhood Association meetings that I was, that I was invited to, and there's been a series of them over the last, I've got yours, I think some here, and I got yours, there's something, I got yours.
We got one coming, you didn't get ours yet.
Oh, okay.
That Metro is at the meet and greet. We got Sharon Hollow will be having something, they'll be calling you, your staff soon.
Okay, so he's right, it was just kind of a coincidence.
Right, right.
So it wasn't like people were coming in there to, you know, because there's other, there's other issues in the neighborhood that him and I have discussed, that, you know, people probably come there and speak to as well, so.
And I want to tell you, and I want to say, too, Councilman Johnson, I appreciate, you know, you know, the heads up about the information or the questioning or the concerns that I may be walking into when I go into this meeting, to, so that's, I'm better prepared to answer some of those questions, so appreciate it.
Bill, I had a fast one. We know litigation can take years. So if we do see something that maybe could have been done different, are we allowed to discuss it, like procedures-wise or?
Yes, well, I mean, it's a good question. That's a really good question. We're free to discuss, you know, whatever your observations are, whatever. Well, we're talking, we're talking strictly, you know, as far as the case goes.
Yeah.
As far as I'm aware, you're not a witness or anything.
Yeah, but I'm just thinking that, you know, like, the one thing that comes to mind, and I don't want the chief to answer, but if it causes problems, detectives don't wear the video that the regular street officers do. Is that something that maybe we should look into that?
Yeah, let me answer that. We just received the body cameras for the detectives. They just, they just arrived early, either late last week or early this week. And so right now, we're in the process of training and fitting those detectives for that equipment, so.
And I got one more fast one, chief, and I know you're short on manpower, and I'd love to see that increase, but has there been thought, in the old days, there'd be two policemen per car, that there's always not just one person on their own? Is that something that could be looked at, that, you know, for safety reasons for our police officers? Because there's, I think every day, there's a shooting of a policeman throughout the country, and I think if you have two officers together, it's a lot, in my mind, safer. But I know we're limited, I'm not, you know, putting an unfunded mandate on you, but, you know.
And you're right, from a safety perspective, it's better to have two officers responding to incidents, but from a, from a delivery, a service delivery perspective, especially when you're short-staffed, we can get much more spread in our delivery, much, much quicker response times by having officers in single cars. We can get much more police presence. We have, you know, one of the things I'm consistently hearing is that there's not enough police presence in the city. Well, you know, they're not seeing police cars on the streets. Well, by putting single officers in cars, we get more cars on the street. And so, but, but as we, I'm sorry, go ahead.
And what is the procedure for officers at that point, you know, officer in cars by himself, him or herself? If they feel they encounter, is there like a procedure where they call somebody else, and that's when it brings another officer, a response?
Right, right. And Councilman Kimbrough knows this very well, when, you know, when they're single units and there's a situation where it requires backup, officers are trained to wait for backup, and serve basically as eyes and ears and observe in the situation until they can get appropriate backup if they feel the situation is not safe.
So like, so like, if they pull someone over and it's known, a car, or somebody might be in his car with a gun, they would pull them over, but they'd probably call and wait for the other officer to come?
That's absolutely correct. And then there, and in fact, there are certain calls where it's mandated that there are two, that two officers respond, even if they're in single cars, for example, domestic incidents, and, you know, violent assaults and things like, robberies and things like that.
Thank you, chief.
You're welcome.
Chief, are we still doing the state voice, they're still there, right?
Yes.
How many, like, how many state truders?
I think, I think it's, I think it's once every couple of weeks, and it's only on the weekends, and it's, if I'm not mistaken, two or three officers that are riding with officers in double units when they're out there.
So it's not at all times?
Not, no, no, just certain times that they're out.
Are there any other questions on a particular issue, quickly?
You mentioned that the detectives will begin the body cams. Is that the last unit that is without that equipment at this point, once they, they have that equipment, will all officers have that equipment?
Yes, yes, all officers who are required at any time to do work out on the road, or in the community, interacting with community members, they will have body cameras. Thank you. You're welcome.
Mountain has it now, chief? Mountain has it now or not? Who's that? Mounted, Mounted Division, please.
Yes.
I do have, I'm glad you, there was a policy when they were supposed to be on.
I do have, I'm glad you, there was a policy when they were supposed to be on, and I think the community after Mr. Ivy's case, they said they were going to change the policy of when they're supposed to be on. Has that happened? Or do you know when they're supposed to be triggered to be on? Is it turned on, let's say, for someone over to encounter someone? Because it was, it was definitely in one of the recommendations, because they said, well, we don't, before they didn't have to turn them on if they didn't feel there was, you know, there was, they didn't feel there was an interaction, they had to turn them on. But has that changed, has that policy changed? If you interact with someone, that camera immediately goes on. You pull them over, you stop them, that camera, should that camera be on?
Yeah, when they are dispatched to a run, the camera, the camera should be activated.
What about, you know, approaching someone?
Or, or, or any, any, any interactions like that. Anytime there's, there's interactions with the public, those cameras should be on.
What if it exists, though, when they weren't able to, based on the sensitivity of the situation?
Yeah.
Can you just send Michelle the updated policy?
There you go. I know they were talking about changing it, because after Mr. Ivy, some things where people were like, why are they on?
Could you also, how often, how often do we get the number of staff?
You know what, I had, I invited you to send the chief the requirements to the local hall, because I don't think people are aware of it, that there are quarterly staffing reports from both fire and police to the council.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, fire, I think actually, I think Chief Gregory's a little bit behind somewhat, so, but I've been meaning to refresh instead of that.
Yeah, could you please, I wasn't aware of those.
You weren't, I mean, you weren't here when that happened and we did the changeover, and I think the change in command staff and everything else, so. But there are, it's a quarterly staffing reports.
So roughly, how many are we down? We had a class of nineteen, and two dropped out of that class?
Yeah, we started.
Any more retirements, so?
Yeah, we've had, well, we started out with twenty in the academy, had one drop out right away, and then I think three have dropped out since then, so I think we're down to sixteen in the academy right now. I think our current staffing is somewhere around three hundred and, three hundred and twelve, or somewhere in that area. Authorized staffing is three forty, two oh and six. And, and we just recently had, we've had probably four or five retirements within these last, these last two, three weeks or so. And we've, so our plan is to have another academy in May or June of this year. Yep, yep, this, yep.
And so is your list still live, live list, or we have to get another?
Well, and so now we're down, we have a, we have a list, and we've exhausted the list. And so now we're going back on the list that, of Albany residents, and, and going through that list one more time. And if, once that, and I think there's, there's fifty, either fifty or sixty names on that list right now. And once we go through that list, then there's a list of non-Auburni residents, that, that there's, there's some opportunity, but obviously that's, that.
Personally, personally, I think we should open that up, okay? Oh, it is not, but I think, but I think people are looking at, I think a lot of things make sense, because we're women in ourselves, and we aren't getting not only the number of candidates, but the good candidates out of a bigger pool than we have. I understand a lot of people don't want to be police officers anymore, such as, you know, when there were a thousand, they can be there after nine eleven, etc., but I think, I think it really has to look that, you know, so we should have a discussion. I did, I did really think.
We need to follow the rest of our technical. Unless there's any other questions?
Can I, I'm sorry, can I just get a clarification of the numbers? So we have three hundred and twelve.
You know what, why don't I do this, so I can give you accurate numbers? Let me, I'll have, I'll have somebody email you, email the, email Michelle. I'll have somebody email Michelle our exact, where we are exactly.
That's good.
And, and how many, we have in the academy right now, and, and how many were short, and how many retirements we've recently had. I'll get all that information to her tomorrow. Thank you. Okay, you're welcome.
Thank you, Chief.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Do you see it?
See, let's take care. We'll see it, take care.
Thanks. I'll see you, sir.
Okay, okay, we'll see you.
Exactly. It's okay, Chief, we'll see you. You don't have to say. Thank you. All right, good, thank you. I take back my thoughts about. Back to Wood. Yeah, I'm ready. Two days ago.
Today, and so I have Patricia Fahy. Add it up there for me.
No, I, I haven't seen it. I agree. All right, one or couple, before we get right back into the agenda, one of the issues involving Gerald, I wanted to cover. I, you want to tell people what you're doing?
He's not retiring.
No, he's leaving us.
Oh, no.
Are you there?
Yes, sir.
Oh.
Oh, man.
I will be moving on, I've got my position with the Senate, in the Journal of Police, and I'll be moving on at the end of the month.
Oh, congratulations.
How dare you? How dare you?
Congratulations. You'll be much less missed.
How dare you?
Hey, hey, Gerald, more money, more money.
I don't blame you.
I know. The guy that had a job before him went to the Senate, too. That's why he went to the Senate.
Not a wood.
He's with the court.
Yes.
As a staffer.
Not, yes.
So that will obviously leave that position vacant. The council makes the appointment. There's a process that we go through, and in total, the position is filled, and it's made. The deputy clerk, which right now is Gashana, once he leaves, it'll be, but we won't have to fill by that point anyway, she will in effect be serving as acting city clerk during that period. So that's the process, and then we will have to consider in terms of moving forward, what we want to do. In the past, we have, you know, posted the position and done interviews, et cetera. So not to get into all that detail tonight, but wanted to make sure you were aware that Gerald is leaving, what happens in the interim, and what's moving forward.
Yeah, with Gashana, are we going to make sure that she's aware that she's going to be taking on extra duties?
I think she's aware, yeah.
About the money, though, side, that we don't care?
Well, yeah, in that case, in that case, when, when a deputy assumes a higher position, there is a city policy in place that that deputy, during the time that that exercises that higher position, there is a compensation to account for that. That's different than when a deputy.
No, I'm just, I just wanted to make sure we're covering on that.
But we'll, we'll have further discussion on that in terms of the process and procedures. Wanted to get that out tonight. I want to quickly go through the agenda, and then there are some other housekeeping issues we also wanted to touch, touch on. Unless you're, you're going to be, you're going, you know, you'll take care of whatever trend issues staff obviously.
Yeah, I mean, granted, the culture of the office is such that, you know, things are, I'm confident that, you know, the coach that they have to maintain, everyone's been there for at least five years, except for Sapphire, who's been there now for two years. But in the interim between now and when I do leave, I have a plan in place to kind of prepare Gashana for some of the upcoming items, permits that are going to be coming up. So things should, things should be able to, to run pretty efficiently, to, you know, council meets whatever decision is necessary.
Who's the general clerk? General clerk? General clerk.
Okay. It's no questions there, move on to the agenda. For, okay, the agenda is for Thursday, January twenty fourth, due to the holiday on Monday. Quickly, local law is held. Item two, which is local law, A, by Mr. Hoey, relates to the keeping of minutes by public boards. That's going to be on a council operation, public agenda on January twenty third, assuming that comes out of committee, which I think is probably, well, not, not controversial. I anticipate that would come up for a vote on Monday, I'm sorry, on Thursday, two twenty four.
Oh, so, okay.
On the ordinances introduced, Q twelve nineteen by myself and Ms. Manani. This is a resolution that would require the chief of police to mark the distance from which you can, a vehicle can park their car near a fire hydrant. The requirement is you can't park, you have to be fifteen feet away, and if you have an issue with the damage. We had conversations. Doesn't that come up all the time?
There's been conversations, but nothing done. We've got to get it done this summer, right?
We have, I mean.
When it's, when it's snow, you couldn't write a specific, or use a lot of stuff that we've talked about.
It doesn't specify it has to be farther, but there have been instances, which I have seen, and maybe Lucy's, where people have come up to a call, look at it, they have to take wrencher and measure the range to where the car is parked, and if it is fourteen point five feet away, that vehicle will get taken.
Yeah, I just want to know how much it's going to cost.
Right, right, that's a conversation. What year we, we probably had agreement to use summer help to do it, but anyway. So it's still an issue, and I know.
People are dying people, right? Visual.
People have no excuses. Some people walk too far, some people walk too far.
They're residents, and they're also thrown out.
I mean, so if this right now, so it goes to be, we have to discuss, sign it. Three twelve nineteen, the next few ordinances come from the planning department. Three twelve nineteen is a, what they call a text amendment related to special protected areas. It's an introduction, it'll be by Ms. Fahy, who refers to the planning committee. And the next one is a zoning change for one fifty-one and one fifty-three Bran Street, which is in the second ward. So that'll be an introduction, but Mr. Johnson, I'm sure you're familiar with this one, but it'll be an introduction and also a referral to the planning committee. These have both had public hearings before the planning board, and we've gotten the recommendations from the planning board, so that end of the project is done, so the planning committee will be to be well therein. And these also look before our public hearings by the council before we can ask. And by the way, on the issue that I did get from Brad, because we had discussions, the format for a public hearing notice is different than what we've done in the past, and there's a template that I got from Brad for what they use, and under the USDA, basically, the chief planning officer determines format and content, which does talk about the availability of the documents inspection, its availability online, hours where people can come in and inspect, and provision for members of the public to submit written comments prior to a hearing. So all of that are new standards that were under the USDA, that are not part of the zoning ordinance prior to this, when we've done hearings in the past. So I'm going to afford his stuff on, but I have that now, basically what they use.
Okay, as far as when we hold the hearings?
Not when, but the, the format in terms of what the content and what it has to say, in terms of what the topic is, and also the availability of the document.
Okay, right, I understand that, but the next step, though, is scheduling?
Yes, I think it's about the scheduling now.
So are we going to be able to do it?
The sign ordinance, my question, when we get to the methadone piece, because I have questions about that. But both of these, these two pieces will go to planning for now. And then on the ordinances in hell, so on the first one, on the methadone piece, so the planning committee met on that.
We did, there are still some changes.
Okay, so you made changes on it. So the question is, when we publish the notice of a public hearing on this, it should be on, not the original proposal.
Right.
But it should be on the proposal that is now under consideration.
Yes.
So.
So what do we need to do?
So that would need to be amended to reflect it, so that the notice is on the amended one. So my goal, I think we would want to have notice of public hearings for this and the sign ordinance at our first meeting in February, which I think is February, whatever it is, February third or something?
Yeah.
With the sign ordinance is all done, I think if we wait until the twenty-fourth, we might have, be close to the ten-day requirement. So I think we can just say on the methadone one, you know, as amended on one twenty-four, have that one available for public inspection and put it on the website. We have to put places on the website where people can find these, and maybe if we put it with the hearing notice on the website, that save file, so that it's easily, and we have to be able to, in the, in the legal notice, be able to indicate where it's available.
Okay.
So if we do it that way. Can you send me a template? Yes. If we do it that way, it has to be within the TU ten days in advance and all that. You know, Gerald knows how to do that.
And they have to have it four days before?
Yes, that's why, because there are timelines when they have to have it before it actually appears in print. So it has to be in print ten days before the hearing, the TU has their, they have to get it in advance of that. Fourteen, yeah, but Gerald, I mean, you have, he knows all that.
Well, essentially, it needs to go to the TU tomorrow or the next day. In order to, in order for it to be published, ten days in advance, you know, depending upon what the holiday situation is, right?
It can.
This is in order to have a hearing on February sixteenth, February third? February fourth? February fourth?
February fourth, it would be the target date of the hearing.
Oh, okay.
That is, today is the sixteenth, that's one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, sixteen, seventeen, eighteen, eighteen calendar dates away, so we should get that in as soon as possible. So I, I think we can say amended in the notice that we send to them, even though it's not physically ready, because what they need, the text, they just need to get the text.
The advance notice.
Of, of the notice. PTO just needs a text of what.
Who?
The TU just needs the text of the legal notice.
Okay.
It won't appear for a couple of days after they get it. In that time, that piece can be revised, so that the revised one is available.
And the notice will say as amended?
Yes.
Is that the one that I sent the amendment on?
Okay.
Remember I sent you an amendment, and the language, it was contradictory, it said may or must, may or shall?
Is that the method?
Was it the method, or was that the classical one?
Which one? What classical one is even in?
Okay, I'm not sure. Who was the method? And you said you'd send it to the sponsor?
I haven't.
Oh, you haven't?
So that would, all right.
Yes.
Okay, so we'll get that, I'll send you all the templates. Okay. And then if there's no problems, those can both be passed as for February third. On the bonding orders.
So February third?
Yes.
And February fourth is what?
Yeah, you know what? Whatever the date is, I can work.
Fourth is the Monday, okay.
That's the date, the first, okay. Okay. Yes. On the, on the bonding ordinances. Okay, so we're not going to discuss those tonight. Finance Committee has been meeting on all of those, they're going to have their final meeting on January twenty-third, where you'll finalize your recommendations with the.
We're going to have a presentation by Randy Milano, which is supposed to include the information about the roads and sidewalks, that those two bonding ordinances, as well as bridges and buildings, we need an update on, and then also the Skyway project. Those are all being presented that night, and then hopefully, we're going to then make decisions regarding what we're going to do with all of the bonding ordinances.
On the, the bonding orders.
So, February 3rd? And February 4th is what?
Yeah, you know what? Whatever the date is, I can work.
Fourth is the Monday, okay.
That's the date, the first day, okay. Okay. Yes. On the, on the bonding ordinances. So, we're not gonna discuss those tonight. Finance committee has been meeting on all of those. They're gonna have their final meeting on January 23rd, where you'll finalize your recommendations with the expectation.
We're gonna have a presentation by Randy Milano, which is supposed to include the information about the roads and sidewalks. That, those two bonding ordinances, as well as bridges and buildings, we need an update on, and then also the Skyway project.
Okay.
Those are all being presented that night, and then, hopefully, we're going to then make decisions regarding what we're gonna do with all of the bonding ordinances. And I'm doing up a chart, there are some, there are a number of places where we can make, we need to make modifications, and there are some that we, a lot that we can make modifications on and bring it within our debt service limits.
So, the committee's gonna meet 5:30 on the 23rd?
Yes, because your meeting is gonna take no more than 15 minutes.
And that should be a very quick meeting. No need to spend a lot of time explaining what the topic is, because, you know, we all know what it is. So, so we want to get that done. But in order for the council to have a full discussion on Thursday, the 24th, we wanted to have, instead of starting our caucus at 6:30, we were talking about having an earlier caucus. So we'll have more time to discuss the finance committee recommendations and work, and what we're gonna try to pass that tonight. What time did you want it to be?
5:30.
What, so would people be available for a caucus starting at 5:30 on January 24th? And we will, we will be, basically that's to give us more time to discuss all of the funding and stuff.
We have a meeting on the 24th?
So the 24th, remember, the 24th is our regular meeting? It's on a Thursday?
It's Thursday.
Did we schedule, we did schedule some, no?
No, that was.
You said 5:30, would you?
We, we're looking at that. That was the sign ordinance.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We have a meeting at 5:30.
That's the planning committee meeting on 24th.
The 24th at 5:30?
We were gonna do the hearing and the meeting at the same, the same night.
Do you want to move that to? The, the sign ordinance shouldn't take long, should it?
No, I don't think so, I think it's pretty.
Unless you get a lot of public comment.
It's simply a move to reduce the size, the maximum size of signs in residential areas. Right now, it's 20 square feet, and this would reduce it to six square feet. And that was agreed to by the planning board.
It's consistent with the planning board recommendation.
And also, it doesn't preclude, in the course of us doing our six-month review, to maybe do a deeper dive and get some reaction, but the goal is, right now,
Which they plan to do.
Let's prevent any more oversized signs going into residential areas.
No, all I'm saying, you don't know how many people show up, I'm not saying, you know, against or anything like that.
Well, this is not public, this is, there has to be a public hearing on this also, which will be in our meeting in February.
So this is just for the committee meeting?
Well, we had talked about actually doing the hearing that night too, but it doesn't look like that's possible anyway.
Right, the public hearing will be on February 4th.
Yeah, okay.
So do you, what do you want to do?
Well, I don't know, it's, I mean, that's, this is already scheduled, the 24th.
So if we do that at 5:30, we do the, start the bonding ordinances at 5:45?
Right, so I'm saying we can do both, but we just do, keep the planning one, assuming it will be a short meeting, and the finance committee will be immediately followed.
Okay.
Okay?
Can you double check with?
And that's the finance meeting, I'm sorry, caucus will immediately follow.
Be confirmed, but I'll double check.
Yeah. Just a reminder.
Caucus at 5:45 then.
Seeing as, you know, the last time.
So please, let's, you know, be here as promptly as possible, so we can get that started as quickly.
Send out all those reminders, will you?
On the remaining ordinances on the agenda. Item 22 by Mr. Kimbrough is a change with regard to MDW reports. That came in the housing committee with a positive recommendation. So that will be a pass. On the resolutions introduced. Two resolutions, two twelve nineteen. This is a, the resolution relating to the multi-jurisdictional multi-hazard mitigation plan. That plan itself is a link, it's available on the county website, it's about 210 pages. We're not passing this on, it's an introduction for Thursday. Working with Marissa to have both the fire and the web department are involved in this. So we're looking at having a presentation on this at our caucus of January 30th. And I've asked her also if there's some kind of a brief summary that they're, they have, that they can also send us in advance. So this will just be an introduction, it's something that we need to adopt as part of the county planning process. So this will just be an introduction, and anticipating we'll be having a presentation at the caucus on January 30th. I'm not sure who the introducers are yet, but we'll figure that out. The other one is the three twelve nineteen, be by Mr. Johnson, that is the South End project, and that will be a pass, that's Brad was here for. On the remaining resolutions, I have those as hold. Anything on the agenda before we move on to some other items? Is not. While we're talking about caucuses, I also want to just put on the radar screens. At our caucus of February 13th, some folks from SUNY Albany will be here to talk about some, what's going on with the downtown campus, which I understand you, you're not, it was the one that Fredo been familiar with. Although that partly hits me, but they haven't talked to me about it.
Downtown, not Midtown, right?
The downtown, Jordan had reached out on it, wanting to come in and just make sure the council's aware of what's going on. But there's a lot happening at downtown campus.
George?
George Carlyle?
Oh, yes, yes.
So we did the chief, we did the agenda, we did the city clerk.
George, George wants to let us know what's going on with the School of Engineering and all that.
Yeah, that whole, this was the downtown campus over. Okay. Before we do that, just also want, everyone should have gotten an email from Dave Allen regarding the Martin Luther King celebration on Monday down at the convention center. Everyone got that? And if you wanted to, I mean, there are seats reserved for elected officials, and if you were going to let them know, and I don't know if, I mean, I was thinking maybe we can let, if we know now, let Michelle know, and Michelle can send in a list of names?
I plan on attending.
You know the guest speakers for that?
I don't know the guest speakers, but they're probably available online, I just have to check the program.
Anyone else?
So.
We're supposed to get two feet of sun.
The snow is coming Saturday night.
Okay, I didn't know, I heard Monday.
Yeah, it's just a short walk for me. You put me down. Is there anyone else? So can you just say who you have?
I have, um, Fredo, Jonathan, Kimbrough, and you.
Put, put me down.
I raised my hand.
Not as long as white, but I have my hands up. And Judy.
And Judy.
And it's specifically like reserved, I will be attending, but I'm not gonna be sitting with. I don't want any reserved seats, I'm gonna be around. They do have like seating, I mean, what they do is, you know, stand on the floor, up front. I was saying, up front, near, near the stage. I mean, I know last year, I saw you weren't there.
With the mic.
You gotta be around.
With the mic.
Good thing you don't have to pay for film. Good thing you don't have to pay for film.
I have to leave at some point.
They should.
That is all.
They messed up.
The other issue.
We'll start charging next year.
I will also note, the, on the census stuff, because we've been asking that question for a while, about what's going on. There is, the complete count committee, which, that listed with shared numbers during the budget. But have, anticipating, Dave said today, that they anticipate having a meeting on that soon. So, I mean, the census is really important, and I don't know what procedural, but if that goes on, we'll make sure that members are aware of what's happening with that.
So is our vital workers person gonna be in the point?
I don't know for sure, I do not think so. Denise Kelly did that in the past, I don't know. The. I think the planning department has taken some kind of a lead. The other thing I just want to note, you know, in terms of, it's the 2020 census, and there are charter requirements in terms of what we do as far as redistricting within a certain amount of time after the numbers are released or appointing a commission. The, the numbers that are, because once the numbers come in, there's a lot of work that's done to tagulate, central, that kind of stuff. The numbers for redistricting purposes are not given, from what I understand, to localities until April of 2021, which, under the old system, you know, petitioning starts in June, now it's gonna start in February.
It's only for one year, by the way.
Huh?
It's only for one year.
Yeah, well, I don't know why they're doing it for one year, because.
Because what they, what it said is, we're not some type of federal compliance.
No, no, that's what.
So you gotta have compliance now, and then next year they can change it.
But next year is when you have the federal offices up. That's why we had the June 14th.
But no, there, it's gonna still be one. It's just gonna be at a different date.
Yeah. Right, they didn't have to deal with the numbers.
Yes.
Anyway.
All I know is carrying petition February 1st.
Yeah.
No one wants to open the door.
Anyway, so.
They targeted.
It's, it's kind of unlikely that those numbers can be used for the 2021 election.
Kind of like.
I, it's not, I don't know, I mean, I don't see.
How you gonna be able to do it?
Anyway, that's, that's not there. We wanted to also quickly now move over to Black History Month celebrations. And who's gonna say them that?
So right now, I have catering, I just contacted Alibi, they've given me the best price. I've been able to get some bigger.
Alibi.
Alibi.
It's a restaurant.
On the Glen Avenue. They've been able to give me the best price, as far as like finger food.
Is this still run by the council now? Because it was the Human Rights Commission last year.
No.
No, this is ours, this, this is the, the honor, Kishana's done it for us in the past.
Oh, yes, I'm aware of that. I thought it had shifted over, no?
No, no, last year it was council. And last year was council.
I think they did their own.
I think, no, special events, I think may have provided some help to us last year, but it was the council.
We're just doing a little something different this year, we're gonna do an anon meet-a-night. We're gonna have people perform, do some spoken words. We're gonna have somebody do the National Anthem. Start off with an open prayer, then a National Anthem, and then two spoken words. And then we'll do some of the nominees for the board leaders, and then we will end with a, we're looking for a keynote speaker right now, someone, so that's what we're doing. We're gonna have food, drinks.
So.
Go ahead.
So we're gonna be, so last year, each council member spoke for about two to three minutes about their nominee. Are we gonna keep that, or are we gonna shorten that, or is someone just gonna introduce all of them?
No, you, you'll still be able to speak to the person in your council.
I'm not trying to take powers, I just wanted, I wanted.
Yeah, we still be on the. Because we're looking for three minutes each, and there's two individuals. Oh, yeah, we will do, we'll have a step team, we're looking into that, having a step team, some children, do a little step routine, but it shouldn't be humorous.
And the idea is to make it more meaningful, we usually have our ceremony, we rush through the ceremony to our council meeting. The idea is to have it on a non-council meeting day, so we can do something more meaningful.
And invite more people, you know, from the public.
And then people can stay and then go.
Reserve the rotunda.
So, when you say you're looking for a speaker, what type of speaker are you looking for?
We have a couple of names of, well, Kelly's supposed to be.
Can we throw you some names? Trying to get someone from the senate, we were talking to do it. But just someone to speak to the times, to speak about, you know, African-American.
Because the guy I would recommend is Equro King, he works at University of Auburn.
Yeah, okay.
And he's always on the spot, he has a great story, you know, gives a good message. And, and. He would be fit for, you know, what we're trying to do, and he'd be quick.
It is February 20th.
The Wednesday?
That is a Wednesday.
Yeah, in that.
Also, if any members are having a trouble finding a person of color, you know, don't hesitate to use us.
Yeah, we can.
I don't have one. I ran out twenty of them in there.
I got you.
Well, I, I'd like to know.
I got you.
Well, you got Michael Clay up there, where you at?
Did Michael, I think.
He, he did it already.
Oh, you did?
Yeah. Is that a good?
Before you leave. I got a question, that's something else.
If it moves back.
What's your question?
Before we break up, I wanted to find out, are we gonna redo this? This says 2012, plus Gerald's gonna be leaving, so.
Um, Gerald, what's the status of the new brochure? Okay, thank you. I didn't know. Anything else?
Some people have pictures there that are. Old. You know, no, I.
All their, all their pics.
No, roll their picture.
No, I'm boring.